Right, it is five o'clock, so we're gonna call the Kedathas County Public Hospital District number one meeting for July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to order. Uh, everyone's had a chance to review the agenda. Uh, are there any comments or changes before we make a motion? Um, I would like to add, uh, under new business. See if people want to have a quick strategic plan discussion. I believe we've all received materials from Jason. It'd be nice for us to just get on the same page. Uh, before we send the team off to finalize that, if people feel that's a good idea, that's fine. Thank you. And then secondly, oh, go ahead. Um, second, I was gonna say, uh, I wanted to say thank you to Matt. It was a terrific note today. I, I mean that sincerely. And I especially loved his internal commentaries. I read through the notes. Um, it was really helpful to get an idea of what happened in that meeting, uh, or the conference. I was just gonna see if anybody else who attended the conference was interested in just giving a quick, hey, this is my takeaway. Or if you'd rather wait another meeting to do that. Either way is fine, but I thought if they had a slot for it.
I touched base with them and, um, since they're finalists, brief comments maybe under our education board reports tonight. So AHA Leadership Summit's under education board reports.
Yeah, I have a brief comment I'm gonna do.
Okay, excellent. Alright, so under education board reports, we would add comments from conference. And, um. Strategic, uh, let's see, other new business would be strategic plan discussion for the board. So that'd be nine A. Erica, did you have a comment?
Yes, I propose that we, um, defer six, item six B, one and two for leading.
So item six B, uh, one and two, have it moved to, uh, a future board meeting. Um, anybody have any thoughts or concerns about that?
Sounds good.
Very good. Uh, any further changes? Okay, do we, uh, have a motion for the amended agenda? Motion by Erica?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any further discussion on the amended agenda? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I too will vote aye. Any opposed? No. Is Bob, Bob, are you on? I don't see your name. So I don't see at this point, so we'll, uh, go with the votes we have. Are you guys still looking for him there? Is he, is he there? Okay, so I have this four yes and, uh, zero on the negative, so that motion passes. If you've had a chance to review the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion when ready.
Motion approved.
All second.
First and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And the two will vote aye. That motion passes. So now we are to, uh, public comment and announcements, um. We're gonna have the group introduced during this section. So we're going to Dr. Bowen, gonna do the introduction of, of the group. Or yes, please, come on out and tell us.
Um, so, hi everyone, thank you. I'm Dr. Christina Bowen. I am the Rural Track Director for the CHCW C W F M residency here in Ellensburg. So we give K V H a very, very, very large thank you for all of the educational opportunities that they provide for us here in the community. Um, as well as partnering with us to keep our residents in the community, whether they're working for us or working for you, we really appreciate that. Um, and so I want to introduce to you, um, our new R two physician. This is Dr. Alejandro Caveo. He comes to us by way of Green Bay from Texas, um, and he is joining us to take over Dr. Marissa Craigers', um, position. She moved to go and practice in Roseburg, Oregon, so she's closer to family. And, and then these are our new two, uh, two new interns. This is Dr. Habiba Ali. Uh, she comes to us from, uh, trained in Pakistan and coming from Texas. And then this is, um, Dr. Spencer Sutton. Some of you may have actually met him because he's, you know, from the area, from Yakima. And so he's been with us, um, off and on through medical school and, and now gonna be with us and hopefully will stay.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Any other, uh, public comments for anyone? Thank you, he's online, I see. We have one, okay? Is that Liz that we're looking for? So, uh, Liz, you're on, you're on for public comment. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
I don't have any comments. I just wanted to listen in to the meeting while I'm fixing dinner, so.
Excellent. I wish I could say the same thing. So, thank you. Enjoy, enjoy listening.
Thanks.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, I don't see anybody else for public comment, so moving on to reports and dashboards, uh, Chief Quality Officer, Manny Olson. Yes, we are. I was testing you, you all passed. So we'll jump back to number five, my apologies, presentations, uh. Family birthing place and hospital OB.
Um, so I'm Amy. I'm the Director of Family Birth in the Fourth Trimester Center. Um, and today with, uh, with me, I have Julie Carwell, who's been a nurse here, um, for fourteen years. Fourteen years, um, and she works in the Fourth Trimester Center as one of our postpartum nurses. Um, so a little background about, um, family birth here at K V H. Um, when the new hospital, this one now was built in nineteen sixty-four, um. OB services was part of that. I do believe there was some OB services in the older building as well, but not a lot of record. I've heard of that, but I've heard. But we've been, OB has been here since the building of this building. Um, in nineteen ninety-seven, um, we did a big remodel to the family birth department. Originally, it only had three rooms and our, what are our two triage rooms now, which are very small, were our labor rooms. And then two O R rooms that they did all the deliveries in. So once they went to the delivery room, then they went to one of the three rooms. And it was shared rooms and then all three rooms shared one bath, so it's all small ones. So in the nineteen ninety-seven remodel, we added, we took out one of our O Rs, so we still have one O R in there and added three more rooms to the unit. Um, in twenty seventeen is when we did a big shift with lactation, so that's when we had our first certified lactation consultant here at K V H. Um, I don't know the exact timeframe, but in twenty nineteen to twenty-two, we started and finished our second big remodel. Um, where we refreshed all our rooms, we added, um, oxygen to all of our labor rooms. So that we could have panda warmers in there, so that was a big project that we did during that time. Um, also during that time in twenty twenty-one is when we established the Fourth Trimester Center. Um, and then in twenty twenty-two is when we had our big loss of our OB GYNs. Um, and had a big transition through that. Um, once that all kind of took place in twenty twenty-three. Our staffing was one family practice OB provider, one midwife and one nurse practitioner. And we are subsidizing, subsidizing with L O Gums. Um, twenty-three, twenty-five through twenty-five is when we went to the O B H G model. Um, and that process was established and then by the end of twenty twenty-four, I think December, all our O B H G providers were on board. Are still there. Um, twenty twenty-four is also when I took over as Director, so Stacey Lawton, uh, switched over to informatics. And I came from clinical education, um, and went over to family birth, but I have been an OB nurse for my whole career, so going in twenty years. I know the area well.
We've had the same lactation consultant, all eight.
Yes, correct.
Which is amazing.
Yep, and the same nurses in the Fourth Trimester Center since it opened. Um, just a little overview of some of our providers here. Um, our O B H G providers, if you haven't met them before, is, um, Dr. Tana Via, uh, Dr. McSorley and Dr. Johns. Um, who come in rotation, um, and do, not only do they do O B G Y N coverage, but they also do surgery while they're here and do on call. And then are also our family practice doctors and pediatricians. Um, for family birth staffing, um, you have me and I oversee, uh, the nursing staff. Um, and our new role divisional coordinators, which used to be our C N As, we've switched to a different model of the secretary based. Works and then oversee them and as well as lactation, the lactation consultant. How our staffing works is that we have three nurses on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, this is a new model for us. We were doing two for quite a while up until the last few months. Um, we also have a divisional coordinator, Monday through Saturday, um, seven to nineteen hundred. Our lactation consultant is on four days a week. She typically works ten hour days, but she sometimes fluctuates her schedule and meet the needs of patients as well. And then we have our fourth trimester nurses that are covering, um, that department seven days a week, during business hours. Uh, we also have an O B G Y N coverage twenty-four seven, um, anesthesia coverage twenty-four seven. And then a management coverage through me twenty-four seven. Um, a couple of months ago, we asked us, all of us directors, to come up with vision statements for our departments. And so, um, not only myself, but the, also the staff kind of came up with what we see as our vision statement, statement for family birth. So, do you want me to read over it, if you guys just wanna read it?
You do, you.
Okay, well, you guys can read over it and ask him, see if you have any questions.
Like the acknowledgement and the last bullet point, the last statement there that, about the lasting impression, that's so true. Such an imprint on people's minds and hearts, what, what happens in the family birth place.
Absolutely. I feel like. Whether someone has a good experience or a bad experience really dictates whether they stay with K V H long term or whether they go with their place.
Or if they kind of, you know, an unfortunate experience, but receive really compassionate care, that's a huge impression as well.
Good one. Um, so a little bit more in depth of our department and what we offer. So we have six rooms. Three are deemed official labor rooms and three are smaller postpartum rooms. But, you know, in the moments we are busy, we'll use all rooms for everything. And we also have two triage rooms and we have one O R and then two nursery bays that we will use to, um, stabilize babies. If they need a little extra help, otherwise they just room in with their parents. Um, we are a level one facility, um, and some of the things we offer are antipartum care, which includes scheduled. N S Ts, which is non-stress tests for pregnant patients. Triage visits for anything that comes up during their pregnancy that they need, um, immediate help with. Uh, we also do IV infusions, which we took over from S O P Services for pregnant patients in the last year. Um, we do preterm care, we do labor and delivery care, um, not only for women's health, but also for Basalt. And then we also take midwife transfers from the community. And we do cesarean deliveries, um, we offer obstetric analgesia and anesthesia, so epidurals. Um, or spinal, uh, we do postpartum care, we do level one newborn care, which means. Um, we will deliver babies greater than thirty-five weeks. If there's anyone less than thirty-five weeks, then we will stabilize and transport them elsewhere. Which we are very good at. Uh, we do higher's pregnancy care up to a limit. We have, um, things that we can do here and things that we will transfer patients out if needed to other places with higher level of care. Um, and then we have the fourth trimester support, um, that Julie is gonna go into. Um, but it is a free care for the entire community, so they don't have to deliver here at K V H. Um, they can have delivered at another facility and then come here for that postpartum and lactation support. Um, like I said, it's a free service, so no insurance, no, anyone just walks in and they get the care that they want. Um, within the fourth trimester, we also have some support groups and community collaborations that Julie can touch more on.
Can I ask you a couple of questions before we hand off?
Yeah.
So for the, the, the free service for people that did not deliver here, how do we get the word out to them that this exists?
Well, in a, in a variety of ways, but, um, sometimes their providers will, um. A, a common, a common way that they get to us is that they're delivering, let's say at Swedish Izakua. And then when they're being discharged, the, the hospital wants them to make appointments, follow appointments with their babies. And so then they will call, um, if they're coming back to Ellensburg, they'll call K V H Peds often. And then K V H Peds will say, we can't get you in for that first appointment, but we can see you at two weeks, call the fourth trimester center. So then when they call the fourth trimester center, we can get the baby in for that first, um, weight and color check, which, which we want to do. Usually within one to two days of discharge from the hospital, so we can do that and work, do a whole, but we'll do a whole post. We'll do a whole fourth trimester visit with mom and baby. So that's a, a common way that they get to us. We also, through the Fourth Trimester Center, um, teach, we do the birth and family education through fourth trimester. And we have people who find our classes online that aren't gonna be delivering here at K V H, but they come to us for their childbirth education classes. And we talk that we're in the fourth trimester center, we talk about the fourth trimester center. And most of those people then will ask their providers to refer them back to the fourth trimester center after they've delivered, wherever they've delivered. And they also often will say, hey, act, just recently, they intend to deliver someplace else. They take our classes, they go on the tour and they end up delivering here, you know, so, um. Because we're a great, it's a good place to be, right? But they, they know that because they're, then they're, they're, they're here and they're seeing it and they're asking questions, so. So it's, it's, it's a lot of that.
A lot of also word of mouth, um, moms talking to different moms, social media, um, and they do a really good job of getting word out.
And you also had said that occasionally we have a baby that has to be transported. What percentage of that is in this community?
Um, I don't know the exact number, it's not common. Um, because we only take certain amount of risk value here, um, most of our babies get to stay here. But we do have things where someone gets, calls nine one one or nine ninety, like happened the other week and we had twenty-three week twins that we had to ship out and deliver. Um, so we do get some of that as well, of people being in the area, especially in summer, they went camping, they come in. They're, you know, not that age, they have to send them out, but, um, it's a small percentage. So for Thomas, do you know percentages?
I don't have a number off the top of my head, but it.
Well, it's like three to three percent when I looked into it.
Yeah, it's not a large.
I had explored it before our baby was born, yeah, and we got to be one of those. And they, I mean, just from going through it, our, our health was such an amazing thing. Job, working through those two and in connection with the receiving facilities and lifeline teams, I mean. It's just amazing to go through that firsthand and see how a network works together.
Yeah, important to emphasize, that means the system works, the, the role of a critical access hospital is to deliver that immediate care that's needed. And then help triage and identify the appropriate resources for definitive care, so.
Yeah, and we have a great chip with Lifelight, so if we have any acknowledgement at any time, that, that situation. Um, we can call them and they'll be here and they come with a full NICU team. And so even when we don't know when they come over. Um, they bring their own specialists and then continue, you know, do that care while they're in the transfer route.
So Lifeline has a specific team based on what they know they're flying, if they get advanced notice.
Yep, yep. So they'll send a NICU nurse and their own respiratory therapist and any other specialty needs they need.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want to talk a little bit more about the first trimester?
Sure, um, to look for, I don't know how much you wanna know, but the Fourth Trimester Center, um, we started it almost four years ago. Four years ago, I think in, uh, August, September, um, and we've, I, when I look back at where we've come. We've come so far in four years, but it's been sort of this gradual add-on. Um, we're really, we really are a, a resource center, so we want people to feel, new families to feel welcome to kind of stop with us. If they need resources of any kind, and so we were, when people come in, when moms and babies and dads and older siblings come in. We assess moms, we do a physical assessment initially, we do the weight and color checks for the babies. And a big thing, a big part of what we work on in those, that first visit is feeding, and if there's any feeding issues. Because if there's feeding issues, there's gonna be other issues too. So if we can, if we can get on top of eating, um, we can, we can kind of get past a lot of that early stuff. Um, but we also spend a lot, a significant amount of time talking about maternal mental health, and that's a big part of what we add. I think that we have the time to add that other clinic visits maybe can't focus quite as much time on. And it's a really comfortable, you're in an office, it's, it's pretty comfortable and people tend to talk about how they're feeling. So this is, this is a new thing for me as a nurse, I was always a labor nurse. But to actually spend time just talking with people and really hearing how people are doing in the postpartum period. Lets me know that all the statistics that we're hearing about how well people are, are not, is true. Um, nobody's sailing through postpartum, not a single person in our county just kind of thinks, this is wonderful, I love this so much, that's, that's. Um, so when they, when you, when you ask them and you sit with them, you're hearing this up. We have the support groups that we started, we're really proud of those because they are having a huge effect, a huge impact. And people, those support groups are growing because people are coming in and then by word of mouth, they're telling other people. And we have some people in our support groups and our postpartum park ramble that we do every Tuesday at a local park. Um, we get together, we just get out and walk and just talk about how, how things are going. But all these ways that we're trying to make connections between new families in the community is really, I think is really having a positive impact. And some of the people in our, in those groups are now, I consider them kind of unofficial ambassadors for the Fourth Trimester Center. They walk around with our postpartum park rack cards on their person. And anytime they see moms and babies out in the community, when they're out with theirs, they're saying, come to our park ramble, come to one of the supports. And so they, it's just kind of exponentially growing, the participation. Because, because it's being, it's being, it's having such a positive impact on, on the families. The other thing I would like to say is that by, by doing this, um, providing this complete access to people, they don't have to have insurance, there's no fee involved. Um, they can, it, it really, I hear so many positive things about K V H. Because they've gotten introduced to this program and they are so appreciative of the fact that they have this. And their mothers, you know, the grandmas are saying, we never had anything like this, this is amazing, I wish we would have had something like this. And so it just, it has, it's had a real ripple effect, I think, from the people that we've seen and it really, you see it kind of ripple out, so.
I can attest too, because I have a huge age difference in my kids, that I had my last child who's three here and went to the Fourth Trimester Center. Um, you know, compared to my sixteen-year-old, you know, the, the services weren't around. I had to figure it out, I had to figure out how to, you know. Function and cope and breastfeed and, and so to have the support there that you can go to is just amazing.
Makes me wanna have another kid.
Right. Yep. And then in addition to the support groups, then you have all the moms who now have a community of people that understand that are all making their own groups. And they have their own chats going and they're getting together and, you know, so then they don't feel so bummed.
A big mom group. We also do the grief and loss support, which I think is a big, a big piece that was missing. Um, and I, that's a, a goal is to do more with that, but, um, we took on the responsibility of making contact. With everybody who's had, um, at least making contact with everybody, every mother who's had a pregnancy loss. Especially early pregnancy loss, because a lot of times that doesn't happen by way of the clinic. It happens, women will be bleeding, they know they're pregnant, they think they're pregnant, they come into the. The loss of the pregnancy is diagnosed and they're sent home and then that's kind of what they get, right? Because it was early. And so what we try to do is, and it took us, it took us over a year to, to get, get it set up so that we could get flagged when those people did come in. But now we have it in place, we have, we use the AdaptX program, so we can see when people have come in with a possible pregnancy loss. And then I can follow through, I can do chart review and follow through what happened, and then for the people who truly had a loss, then I could at least call them, make contact with them. And let them know that we do have some resources for grief and for support and really just letting them know that. That, that K V H is acknowledging that they've had a loss of a pregnancy and that we recognize that that's a, a significant thing.
Could you say a little more, please, about what those resources are?
Um, well, we work a lot with, uh, uh, community resources and online resources. Um, one group that we work with a lot is, um, uh, Perineal Support Washington or P S W A. Um, and then their bigger organization is Postpartum Support International. So they have a lot of, uh, mental health resources. They are, they're a huge resource for us. Uh, because they have a lot of online resources, but also local referrals. So, um, because there just aren't enough mental health providers in any community, but certainly not in our community for maternal mental health. Those online resources are amazing, they're really important. So we use a lot of their resources and we connect. So we can, if somebody comes into the office, let's say, and is having a really hard time with, um, postpartum depression, anxiety. Um, postpartum grief or pregnancy loss grief, if it's something that they need more, they're really, it does seem like they maybe could benefit from. Talk therapy or, or talking with the counselor, we can, I, we can make that phone call while they're in my office if they want to. We can connect with P S Washington and then they can get the information and they can find an online provider that, um. Will be covered by their insurance, that particular patient's insurance. So it's a, it, we really, we want them a lot for resources.
Thank you.
And on the clinical side of it, um, whenever we have a loss in family birth. Um, we have specialty services to make special packets for the parents. Um, we, Rosique, our lactation, amazing lactation consultant that does so much of this work will come in and take pictures of the, the newborns for the family. Um, and so we really try to, and, you know, give them services about grief support as well, um, on the clinical side as well, when they are with us during that time.
And Commissioner Davis joined us online and he asked a question about, um. The dad's role in the fourth trimester program. Is there a role that the, the dad plays in this process?
Yeah, so they, we, we hope that the dads come to those first appointments and I would say eighty-five percent of them, ninety percent of them do. The ones, sometimes the dads don't come up, they have lots of older children and so they'll stay home with the older kids and mom will come in a new baby. But in general, dads come in for that appointment too. And we talk to dads, this, I mean, we acknowledge that there, there's such a thing as postpartum depression and anxiety for fathers too. Um, the statistics are up to ten percent of men will tell us they're having some symptoms of postpartum depression, that probably means that it's more than that. But we acknowledge that this is an adjustment for the entire family and we want them to know that. And, and I, I always ask that, I'm sure Katie does too, do you have any questions about what's happening with mom and baby, you know? And they often have questions that mom doesn't have or that they, that, that they've noticed, so. Um, and they have, they're tremendous help with breastfeeding too, and so if we can get, if we can have a dad that's in there that's helping mom with breastfeeding as we're showing her, he's watching too. That, that's, that's a success to them, so, yeah.
Um, so just to leave a little glimmer of what we do or how many deliveries we have in family birth. Uh, um, our numbers used to be kind of falling just in above the three hundred range. Um, and then you can kind of see that in twenty twenty-two, we hit three nineteen, and then you see a nice drop in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. When we had our changeover in all their providers. Um, and we are slowly getting back up there. Um, in twenty twenty-five, so far as of today, I think this is the last time I looked at it, we had a hundred and forty-two deliveries so far. And I did all the lovely math, and if we're on that same trajectory that we've had. For the, the first part of this year, we should have over three hundred deliveries for this year. Um, every month is different, we have some months that are slower than others, it's just kind of how it always goes in the OB world. Where you'll have nothing and then all of a sudden you're completely full and then the next day you're nothing and then completely full. So it's hard to kind of gauge on average, um, but it's close to about a, a baby a day, do the, do the math. Um, currently for July, we've, as of today, we've had twenty-six babies, uh, we still have quite a little bit of the month left. And quite a few people still out there, so we may most likely hit thirty or above for this month. Um, but in addition to delivering babies, we do so much more in family birth. Um, so. Our unit is the only unit that does outpatient, um, visits like non-stress tests or triage visits. Or infusions for the whole county, where they don't, where we're it. Um, and so not only would you get, do we get women's health patients, so let's say a patient is thirty-two weeks pregnant. And she has the risk factors that are making her high risk, so let's say her blood pressure's high. Um, the physicians go by their guidelines and say, okay, now they need to have non-stress test visits three times a week. And then they will come over to us, can we monitor the baby, uh, three times a week for them, if anything, a concern comes up. And we let the doctors know, but we communicate with them with every visit. So we do do a lot of those as kind of the community gets more sicker and not as well. We tend to see more outpatient visits. Um, we weren't really tracking the numbers up until recently, so April to March twenty twenty-five, there was seven hundred and eighty-nine visits. That we saw in some outpatient fashion. Um, and since then, now that we're tracking them, um, May, we had eighty-seven. June, we had ninety-four. So far in July, we've had eighty-five. And if we keep these numbers up, we'll say, see over eleven hundred patients in the year for outpatient visits. Um. Like I said, it's not just women's health, so Basalt will send their patients over to us as well, C H C W. Um, so because we're the only ones doing these kind of visits, we get all of them. So even in our times where we may not necessarily be having to deliver babies, we will days where we have a scheduled outpatient visit every hour of the day. Um, so we're doing that work as well. And then in addition to that, it's good to note that. We're seeing less and less low-risk deliveries without any complications. Um, as you can see, and from May to September, we've got a hundred and twenty OB patients on the books just for women's health. Um, and forty-three percent of those are high-risk for one reason or another. Um, of those. Of those hundred and twenty so far, sixteen percent has risked out to other facilities that they've had to transfer their care. Um, that number can change as we get farther into pregnancies and more complications come up and who gets transferred out versus who stays. Um, but hence why we have changed our staffing, you know. And family birth is that everyone is, you know, more complicated. And so they need more one-on-one care. And the guidelines we follow for staffing, um, will deem whether they're low risk or high risk and how they need to be ratioed with nurses.
For those sixteen percent that you know are high risk, you know, you want them to go to another facility delivered. Are you also like preparing or having them somewhere on your list that? Even though they're planning to go to Izakor or whatever, might be coming in here between these weeks or something?
We do. So every week, actually, myself and the women's health, uh, providers. And their, uh, staff, we get on Zoom every week and have, we have a list of all of their. Their patients that they know of, even ones that might be transferring to them from Compass or Basalt. And we talk about every single one of them. So. We keep every single person on the list, whether or not they had a miscarriage or they get transferred. And so we do have them on our radar. Because they do sometimes come in, they don't make it over to where they're supposed to go. And we just had one last week where she's planning to deliver at U-Dub. She came in having, having an attack from preeclampsia and we had to stabilize her here and then send her over to U-Dub. So we do know that they are, they're around and they can definitely come to us at any point.
I mean, in addition to, uh, the deliveries, which we count a lot, I think. It also deserves mention that there's a lot of work that goes into, uh, the care before the delivery and after the delivery. So I would imagine that on average, uh, we're probably racking up about. Four, almost four patient days between mother and baby for every delivery on that, uh, list. So this is a department that is working hard day in and day out, even on the days when the babies aren't actually arriving.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah, great.
Along those, along those lines, I wanted to ask. Um, you know, OB has a very high fixed cost because obviously you don't know when the babies are going to arrive. Currently, say we're two, two fifty, three hundred a year. How high can we go with the current fixed cost before, like? Kind of just answer the question, you're making it sound like it's not just about the baby arriving, it's before and after and stuff. What patient load could we take under the same structure we have before we'd have to grow to that next step?
We would, we would have, uh, we have a little bit of wiggle room, but anywhere past, I would say, four hundred deliveries.
So not a lot of head.
We would need more RN staff because labor patients are one-to-one with nurses because you're not just taking care of the mom, you're taking care of the baby. And so if we have, you know, two labors and a mom that has delivered, that takes three nurses right there. Uh, because the two that are in labor have to be one-on-one with their patients. So. It would require extras staffing for sure and gro- and growth. Um, I think it's possible.
Be a good problem to have. I mean, they're hearing what we're doing and they're responding to it. So that's fine. And I just, I also wanted to acknowledge, Liz, a little while ago, I had a comment online and she just thanked you for doing the, uh. The, the care for loss, you know, acknowledging that stuff. So thanks for your comment, Liz.
She also had a question about staffing. Are you staffed, um, now? Currently now.
Yes. So we, with our change and going from two nurses to three. Um, we have had staffing openings. Um, a lot of our nurses that filled the. Um, extra nurse on days came from nights and so then it's a cascade and then we have openings on nights. So we've had a few openings on nights. That we've been filling with travelers. Um, we have. Two of our full-time physicians filled, one started training a couple of weeks ago, the next one's coming soon. We have a part-time position also filled. And then our last full-time position, um, actually, we just gave, uh, most of the FTE to one of our perdioms that wants to actually take an FTE. And then so it just leaves us with two shifts a month on nights that we are working on.
And we changed, we, we reduced teenagers, added more RNs.
Yes, yeah. So we're adding, we're not losing anyone, we're just adding people.
And restructured the type of staff caring.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so some of our accomplishments, um, to note is creating our new staffing model. Um, it's not always easy to make those kinds of changes. Um, and so that's been a big project that Debbie has been working on with us to make it better that we are. We have the staff that we really need to function in family birth. So. Before the new, the three nurses, we had two nurses and a CNA. And our CNAs have moved to a, uh, divisional coordinator, so secretarial type role. Um, because really in the times where we're really busy, we need the nursing staff. Over seeing, we love the work and support they give us, but that's really where we need to go and, and ended up being a lot of times that I was there. All night long, worked all day, just tried to help support them because. We need nurses to take care of them when they come in and they come, you know, labor patients come in at any point of the day. We never know when they're going to show up. Um, so that's been a big project that we've been working on. Um, another big accomplishment is having our full staff of providers. Um, and it's just really been a great. Thing for the staff because for many years they were dealing with locums, which we had great locums, but. You couldn't really get anywhere with progress or establish. New procedures or standard work because people were in and out and weren't there permanently. They didn't really have a stakehold in. Doing those things here because they weren't working for us. So it's been really great to have solid providers, again, that everyone is getting to know and they know how they practice. And we can make changes to better the unit. So that's been a good thing for us. And we also have three nurses that we certified to teach fetal, our fetal monitoring course. So as many people know, it's sometimes really hard to find specialty courses. To do all your recertification. Um, and fetal monitoring was one of them through A1. Um, so we just brought upon ourselves to teach ourselves how to do it so we could teach the staff. So myself and Jennifer Crane, who works in clinical education and Stacy Button, who was the previous director are all certified. We teach those fetal monitoring classes for our, our staff. Um, we also had a community baby shower event. Um. So it started out as a, how can we connect the community? How can we let them know? That our, we have new providers here and, um, the services that we're offering, things like fourth trimester center. Um, more access to the clinics. And so. We started out with, you know, do we have an open house? And then it kind of turned into this, but we really want the. The community to know what all the services out in the community are for families. So. Um, what it grew into was not only just a visit, you know, an open house for. For TV, but for all of our community providers as well. So we had Valley Psychological Services there. We had. Uh, Dino Discovery, which is one of the new kids play centers in town. Uh, we have CHCW there. So. As many community, community members that we could get there in one room so that when. The community came to see us, they could ask questions to all of the members of all the connections that are out there. So they could be aware of, you know, what services they have available to them. So it was a great, um. Event and I hope to do it every year. And I think it's just really good for our community. Um, fourth trimester has also been working under a grant from PSW for mental health. And that's where all these, um, support groups were established. Um, so Rosika has, um, three support groups out there. One is a, um. An art, an art class.
We're not, yeah, we're not doing that anymore though. It's, it's finished. It, it was completed.
Well, when the PSW grant went away, we had the conversations of how are we going to keep these support groups going? Um, and actually the fourth trimester was approached by, um, Parigee, which is a. A grant group that has someone local here in Ellensburg that had heard about the fourth trimester center. And came to them asking if they could donate money. So they just donated twenty-five thousand dollars to them. And so that's going to help keep a lot of their work that they were doing on mental health support going, um, until we have. Plans for next grant. Um, so that's a, a great thing happening. Um. Recent patient success stories. So I mentioned a little bit briefly about, I just want to. Give props to my team because we don't always get, um, big emergencies to come in, but when we do, we work really hard to prepare. For them. We do tons of drilling through the year. So even if we don't get to practice our, our resuscitation skills often. We definitely practice it a lot. So we have those moments where we, you know, do have something. That we have to face that we're ready for it. So recently, a couple of weeks ago. I got a call about five thirty that there was a patient coming in and that wasn't a patient here. Twenty-two and a half weeks, so normal pregnancy goes to forty, so about halfway through. Um, coming in, in labor. Um, so I came in and luckily it was ready to change a shift, so we had both shifts there. Um, all day shifts stayed over till probably eleven o'clock at night. Um, but we then proceeded to deliver twenty, almost twenty-three week twins. We were about one pound each. Um, and we worked diligently for two hours while we were waiting for the teams because there was some weather issues. To come over with the NICU team so much so that I just stood there and breathed for a baby for two hours. Um, and those, both those babies left alive, which was a huge deal for us. Um, neither one of them ended up making it, but not from anything that we couldn't provide. They just were so small. Um, and so premature. Um, but just the fact that we could come together in a really small unit and somehow have enough staff to. Man two cope teams for a baby and enough staff for the mom. In addition to the labor patient and other patients we already had in the unit, it's pretty profound. Um. We also have started recently doing teen birth, which is a, uh, Washington Collaborative that really focuses on. Um, getting the patients involved in their own decision-making. So a lot of the times we're already doing that, we just end up leaving the patients. That conversation, right? So the doctors have ideas, they briefly talk to the patients and they come to the nurses and. And, you know, talk together, then the nurses go and relay that information to the. Patients and then if they have questions and then back forth with how we go. So, uh, lots of studies, um. That say the, the better way to do it is to actually just have those conversations with the patient in the vets, at the bedside. So. Um, teen birth has been an initiative through Washington to do just that. And so we joined that, um. Collaborative just this past year. And so what it looks like is instead of having those individual conversations, um, we are. Diligent about having huddle with the patient anytime, um, there's a change in care or when they first come in. That includes the nurse and the support people and the patient and the provider to be like, this is what our plan is. This is what we're thinking or do you agree with this plan? Are you okay with how things are moving forward? And it's been a, you know, a really great, positive experience. I think it's, it's made us adjust how we are doing things, but it also. Let us know that we are doing a lot of those things already, we're just being more intentional about it. So part of that process was, um, we survey our patients pre. Um, teen birth and then post-team birth. And, you know, in the surveys, there, there's an area for them to write comments. And so I just wanted to share some of the comments that we see from our patients post-team birth. So. Um, I don't think I've seen a negative comment so far. Um, everything has been very positive. Um, and it's just a nice reminder that the work we are doing is making a difference. And that people are having the experiences that we hope that they're having. Um. This, trust me, if people have negative things to say, they're not afraid to say them. Especially in a denominist paper that we don't know who the patient is. So, um, just something profound to note as well. Okay, things we do in our department for quality. Um, like I said, we do our quarterly drills, internal and fetal, and then we will add to those. As well as we have events come up. So let's say we had a. Stat emergency C-section that the OR crew didn't make it into and staff felt like, oh, we need reminders on that. Then we'll add in specific drills throughout the year, move on different subjects that we feel like we need more practice on. Um, and then teen birth, like I talked about, um, we have our blue band initiative going on, which is a, um. A protocol on how to deal with preeclampsia with patients. So what the blue band does is. Alert other facilities or caretakers like EMS or the ER. Um, that this person is at risk, um, for preeclampsia during her pregnancy. So at any point during the pregnancy, it could be in the office, it could be in the hospital. If they meet the requirements to be concerned about, um, high blood pressures, they will get blue banded and get sent home. A blood pressure cuff to monitor for them, for themselves. And then it's just a way to know because. You know, one, a blood pressure of one forty or ninety, the ED might not be a big deal for someone else, but it's a big deal for us. Um, in OB. So it's a, it's a, a way to alert everyone that this is a concern and they should be paying attention to it. Because a lot of it was being missed.
It's been a six-week program or eight weeks?
Yeah, it goes up to six weeks postpartum. So they'll wear, wear it up to six weeks postpartum. Um, we also have our QBL, um, quality improvement. So. A few years ago, when I was working in the unit, Stacy, um, asked me to work on this. So. For alone, the standard was to do estimated blood loss, which is they just can't look at the bag and eyeball. That's about like two hundred. Clearly we have decided that that's not a good way to practice. Um, and so we went to the quantitative blood loss, um, practice. So. In every room, we have a scale, we have lists of what every single one of our equipment weighs dry. Um, and then our nurses will weigh all of the equipment we use. The doctors will look at our bags before and after a delivery to see how much the blood loss was. And then we will, will calculate the blood loss at birth and then one hour postpartum and three hours postpartum to get an idea of how much blood loss. Um, and at any point they go past the threshold, so more than five hundred for a bad blood delivery, more than a thousand for a C-section. Then we have protocols to call the physicians and let them know, um, so that we can treat it before it gets too bad. Um, in addition, we're just starting the process of working with OVHG on more quality projects. So they are going to come alongside us, sounded like in September, um, and help us kind of streamline what. Other quality things we should be focusing on that's OB-specific. Um, and so more to come with that. Um, in addition to that, they're also going to be helping us start with our OVED model. Which I'll go into a little bit more on another slide.
Liz asked, what's OVHG?
So there are provider groups that we have our obstetricians through, so we have a relationship with them.
Was it OB hospital group?
Yes.
Um, so overcoming challenges, one little, um. When I'm going to use an example is when I came into this role, um. We started to look at how we function as OB triage. Um. We, long story short, I started to look at it because we wanted to get away from nurses doing their own charges instead of having, um. Charge permit deal with them and it kind of opened up this can of worms with our triage. Um, we discovered that we haven't been coding them right as an encounter type. Um, we used to code them as observation, um, but they don't technically meet those requirements of observation. Because most of our patients don't come in for greater than four hours. They're, come in, they get checked for whatever reason. They either go or they stay. Um, so we worked on that and making sure that we were coding them appropriately. And also through that process. Looked at kind of what the standard is, um, in other facilities. And most other facilities are going to a, what is called an OBE. ED model. So we're a subset of the emergency department. Um, a lot of the work that we do down in OB can be done over in the ED. Um, but we're not charging them or coding them the same way. So. We're trying to streamline it so that we are similar. So we're just kind of a subset. Set ED is just an OB-specific area for these patients to come. Um, it helps bring in more revenue for these visits as well as our current model is our nurses really. To mostly bear with these patients. They do all the hands-on stuff and just have a conversation with the providers over the phone. They sign off on stuff unless they're preterm, then they have to come in. But most of the patients don't ever get seen by a provider. Um, so it's also changing that model of. Every single patient should be seen by a provider, whether, um, it's an easy, you know, they are there, they're water roped and they're moving on. Um, they should be. I mean, that's what they're paid for is to see a provider and not just a nurse. And so. We're, we're also working with OVHG to figure out all the technicalities of that and all their rules and regulations. Uh, before we move forward with that. Um, other notable changes in our department is new providers, new director, there's been a lot of change. Um, with that, but everyone has taken it really well. Changing our triage model, staffing model, and then hopefully some new monitoring equipment coming. Down the turnpike because at some point, so we're working on that currently as well. Um, what's to come? We thought it was good to know that we just want to stay open at this point. Um, we, I think I can talk about my whole team and that. Um, we, I think I can s- talk about my whole team in that they absolutely love what they do. They love, every single person loves helping moms and going through those hard moments with them and being a part of that really important moment in their life. And we just really wanna still be here, um, and be able to provide those services to our community. Um, in addition to that, um, we also talk a lot about how we can be more profitable, how we can have more deliveries. Um, what does that look like? Does that involve bringing maternal fetal medicine service somehow to Kita Test County? Does that involve looking at our level of NICU availability? Um, one of the biggest things I think we hear often in this community is that people choose to go to a different facility because we don't have a NICU. They like that, knowing that they're, they're not gonna get separated from their baby. Um, and so that's a big deterrent. So just looking at those things of how can we, how can we give more to this community? Be profitable in what we do and provide these services that the community really needs. Cause the closest NICU is Yakima. Um, and they're very often closed, they're full, they don't have, so they end up transferring people out themselves, even if you showed up at their door. Um, and then beyond that, the other NICUs that are around are Swedish Isopla and Tri-Cities and Spokane. So there's, there's a huge need in this area for those type of services. So we hope to one day be able to do that. Uh, the last thing is, is when I was thinking about a closing takeaway, I was like, how do you put into words everything we do in our unit? Um, and so as best as I could explain, um, I came up with this, that in rural communities or communities all around, really, the OB department is more than just a unit in the hospital. It is the beating heart of hope, resilience and new beginnings. Every birth is a testament to the dedication of caregiver, caregivers who show up day and night, often with limited resources, but limitless compassion. Our work ensures that every family is met with skilled hands, kind hearts, and the promise that every new life matters. Our commitment doesn't just deliver babies, it delivers stronger, healthier future with the entire community. That's, that's good.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for the presentation tonight, we really appreciate it, very informative.
Absolutely.
And you are free to head out if you uh, don't wanna sit through a.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I have just one, one comment to remember to vote.
Oh yeah.
August fifth ballot, vote and get it into the ballot box. Two steps process there, thank you Julie.
Yeah.
Thank you Amy.
All right, now we're moving on to reports and dashboards.
Report chart's on page fourteen and I have a question, I don't have anything in particular to add to.
And this, like, pretty close. Positive, like, good, not positive, the modest times, but improved.
Yes, and so this, I, this is the first time it takes differently too, we added pediatrics. So it's um, primary care on the left and um, specialty care on the right. And so workplace health is also on that one. Stacy looked at the clinics overall and um, saw that that was place that had opportunity, so we added that to the dashboard.
Interesting graphic how they've all timed it that.
I think it's the work, Stacy's on the thirteen, motivating and spreading the work, leveling the work out amongst the teams.
Now we can see that in graph form, the outcome.
I had a question on page seventeen, the very middle of the graph, surgical first case on time start. What are the ch- challenge for a first, is this first case of the day that it starts on time, is what that's?
Yes, within five minutes.
The challenges other than the obvious thing, I guess, is just, is a lot of moving parts.
Right now, we're just looking at the data and measuring and making sure it's measuring what we think it's measuring it. So Amy was talking about, Amy Croxton, about how she's still scrubbing it to make sure it's accurate. Um, so I don't, I couldn't tell you, they, they don't know yet. No, but unless you have which things.
Give you an example, so one of the, so one of the things that we were looking at with on-time starts, you can't just look at the number, cause if I'm Debbie Callens doing a surgery, but I, my second case is in the room next door, but it was first case next door, but it's my second case, that was in the data. So those are the type of things, it's wheels in, wheels out. So the minute the wheels get to the OR, tracking that to the time that they leave you. And that, and there's many things that you know, affect that, such as the preference card maybe wasn't done properly. And so now that, and a lot of instrumentation, like, there's many, many, many things that can affect that patient starting on time and leaving at the right time. So we're starting just simply with first time on time starts for the first case of the day. And then we'll start looking at turnover and then case to case once we get.
Excellent.
Does that help answer your?
Yeah, yeah, I can see it's, it's kind of under development, we're figuring how to make it useful and, and that sort of thing. So I'm glad you're tracking that.
We definitely have a goal and she's got, Bini and her team's already been doing a lot of work around it. But we're trying to make sure that the data's showing it appropriate.
Excellent, thank you.
And the hospice length of stay, less than seven days, when we've they discharged us, that means they've passed. They've discharged from hospice.
Mm-hmm. There, some people have been discharged.
That they opt out at some point or?
Yes, they haven't, what's?
So they may opt out, they may be discharged from hospice because they've chosen a different pathway of care. Uh, they may move out of the region, which is a possibility as well, all of those would be kind of great.
With being respected, they don't. Oh, they don't.
Okay.
Stabilization of their condition, that they don't uh, in their life, uh, it might be appropriate to discharge them.
Okay, so there's multiple reasons why, Angel.
But typically this is talking, the majority of the time, this is because yes, they've, they've passed.
Any other questions from Andy? Anything else, Rob, I was like, our parent service reports, the positives.
Well, that was a whole bunch of parent service reports from home health and hospice. Um, when they had their survey, uh, and we'd meet with the surveyors to talk about the grievance process. And we looked at all of the um, both compliments and concerns that we had received in our system in Verge and Quality. On it, and then we're like, we have way more than what you have here. And they weren't getting them to us. So um, they, they'd get these cards and they'd share them with the team and that's lovely, but then it wasn't getting counted. And the other thing we do in quality is we make sure that the, any compliments related to um, providers, it gets a, it's in their provider file. So um, when we realized, hey, we're missing some of these, they, they gave us a whole bunch of them. So I wish it was that, that was for that month and it was amazing turnaround. And we've suddenly are getting more compliments than concerns, but a lot of it had to do, there was twelve that were from um, home health and hospice.
Over the last seven months though, it's been, is that all from home of hospice over the last seven months?
No, it is definitely going up.
Bob, I've gotten more letters too.
Bob, any questions from Andy?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else for us, thank you. All right, moving on to Chief England Officer Jason.
Thank you, uh, just to go over a few things on my report there, uh, recruiting, still, we're just trying to optimize our, our provider recruiting and our all, all staff recruiting really. So just shout out to Janine, she's shaking up things with the, with the team there, we're gonna um, like, like Heather and Kat are now backing each other up, Heather's learning, so the provider recruiting. Kat will probably possibly start some of the general recruiting learning too. So just trying to get a really robust team in that recruiting realm where we can, even some software programs that can help us with workflows and automatic reminders, like the provider onboarding is so complex, cause it literally touches almost every corner of the hospital. So it seems to help make sure we don't miss a piece of that. So it's been pretty fun to be working through those and trying to do things. Um, rapid access, we are down right now, but I heard we just had a offer assigned this week for a potential rapid access provider, one of the two positions that are open. So hopeful that uh, everything will work out with that provider and, and get them in. And with that, just a shout out to all of our provider staff who are picking up shifts in rapid access. So I've really stepped up in the middle of summer, not the optimal time to be working more, but they've really stepped up and are keeping rapid access open. So thank you to Dr. Thomas's medical staff team, Dr. Roffe's med staff team.
Is the mail for rapid access and maintain it, it's there.
We saw forty.
It's too strong.
People on Monday, forty-four patients on Monday, so yes, we're still.
Awesome. Um, construction updates, so you'll see the general surgery, there's a lot of walls taken off the outside of the general surgery as we're doing some repair work there. And we're having to replace those windows here at the end of the month, I believe it is. So we finally got a schedule on getting all those windows replaced at general surgery. And then uh, Sweet C as well there, so looking forward to get that construction done. Just still working on the concrete as well, they had to pour the concrete in three different phases for the heated concrete out there, so they're working on their last phase right now, if you go. I have all that, so it'd be really nice to have that heated sidewalk between that cold housing ways. It's often a, a fall risk in there. Got a question.
And did I hear the windows are supposed to arrive tomorrow?
Not tomorrow, I think it's at the end of the month.
I know.
We have a schedule.
GSV is moving, I think it's in my report, like the first week in August. Moving, they'll be over there about three weeks, I think it's like August fourth and fifth.
But it's all coming together, fine.
It is all coming together.
Yeah, yeah. And then same with Sweet C, so we rent um, Sweet C, uh, to cascade, put an ankle in the otomurology. And we've got, I think, a ten-day gap scheduled there as well, where they will not have patients. And we can go ahead and off that workout, not work that mission well. And then when that's all done, then we will look forward to having orthopedics move back on, on campus and to their newly renovated space. Um, Clay Hallam, Midtown Depot, so we are just trying to submit documents to Department of Health and get on their uh, waiting list to get the Midtown Depot project underway. So design, everything is ready to go, we just have to have Department of Health stamp of approval. Takes a little bit to try to get the documents to them, and then we just go on their stack and they run about about six days is what I heard to get um, their review done. They have the documents now, awesome. They got their documents and then I think they run their average right now, I heard it was about seventy days. Hopefully it's quicker, but. Um, any questions on, on projects? Uh, regulatory, just legislation stuff we've been talking about. So just to continue to repeat with the, the big beautiful bill or HR one, I think it's called now. Um, impacts of that will be really pretty delayed, so we will hear things like, oh, while you're still open, nothing happened. Uh, twenty twenty-seven is when we'll really start being impacted by the federal bill. Uh, state stuff will start impacting more quickly. Uh, but twenty twenty-seven's when the Medicaid complexities to stay enrolled and start occurring. So we'll, we'll have impacts of past, people start falling off Medicaid and then as those same people start receiving services here. And the biggest um, population will be impacted by that are the Medicaid expansion population. Um. As I noted in the last one, so we've got the levy set, so just remember to vote. Um, shout out to the whole team here and really the whole team at KVH, we have some amazing staff. Everybody really helped and rallied behind this and encouraged um, education out in the community of labor and delivery and our services, and it's been really pretty fun to get out in the community. I think everybody here's attended the farmer's market, got to interact with the community those ways or rotaries or different events. So it's actually been really fun to really push ourselves to get out into the community. Uh, strategy pillars, so we'll have a stuff beginning August sixth to work through this term refresh, here's the pillars and work with the team here to collect information back in May. I think we've got a pretty good graph to present to the board and look forward to your comments and I'll screen stuff and create that. And I'll take any questions.
Questions for Jason? Very much. All right, uh, so moving on, uh, Chief HR, Janine.
I apologize, we don't, I don't have a, a report in the packet, I was out of town and then Manny was out of town and we crossed paths and so we, we were not, I was not able to get it in in time. But um, I can tell you our hiring experience overall satisfaction remains um, at benchmark at four point uh, six to the average. Uh, the number of postings we have is on track, new postings have about twenty-seven. And um, our hot jobs filled was, we have ten open, so pretty uh, similar numbers in terms of our workforce movement. We have a, a pretty good surge of student activity. We, uh, we had fifty-five students resident physicians and job shadows. There were um, twelve job shadows, three student interns, three search tech students, uh, nursing students, imaging tech students, lab techs, respiratory therapy, pharmacy, uh, phlebotomy, I mean, the list, we had a lot. So we're really kind of surging with um, how to coordinate the student experience, which is great, it's a great problem to help. Um, so that's been kind of fun to sort of talk about and, and get our um, arms wrapped around. So we're working to sort of formalize what that experience looks like. Um, again, as Jason alluded to earlier, we're trying to then, you know, what is, what is the full experience for someone here? That relationship building from the moment you meet them, um, these young students coming in, the first impression. And then from there, you're just sort of building uh, the familiarity with our, with our organization. Um, so we're just kind of talking about with that for lifestyle, what it looks like and what we're gonna kind of, things that we can do to make sure that we're maintaining kind of touch points throughout that relationship. Um, and then on uh, lead management, that's another body of work that is uh, we're kind of getting our workflows wrapped around. Um, we have fifty-eight employees on various types of leads, six, twenty, uh, the twenty-six that are pending. Um, and so we're still, we have a, a platform that we put in place to kind of give us a, a good thirty thousand foot view of what's going on. Now we're trying to kind of optimize what those workflows look like and, and how we are able to assist with managers through kind of the complexities of all those leads, because there's just a lot of different um, elements and nuances to those. So we're um, kind of expanding that and we've connected our business partner with some education on that. And she's got um, kind of a legal resource to help guide through that process as well, which has been great. And we are gearing up for uh, union negotiations, we have our WSNA opener. Um, we're looking to get that scheduled uh, end of August, early September. So we're very happy that they were interested in opening up a little bit early so we could start those discussions. Uh, especially with the UKG work that's going on, we know um, we know our change management portion of that is gonna occur sometime October, November, November. We're gonna have a lot of testing back-to-back, parallel uh, payroll testing, et cetera, et cetera. Training for all the managers and the employees, and then our goal live is actually gonna be mid-December, because the first payroll will actually land beginning of January. So we don't have until January to get that rollout done, it'll actually happen right before the holidays. Um, so knowing that we could get hopefully the bulk of, of our um, union discussions or negotiations happening before we hit that sort of goal list of activity is uh, a, a nice thing to have, so we're, we're very happy about that.
When, when does the contract expire?
End of the year.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And. Well, yeah, and then I just uh, have a few um, things to add when we talked about the AHA uh, meeting, that was a very exciting time about, so I'll leave that for that, if anyone has any questions.
Doesn't look like it, so thank you very much, appreciate it. Uh, and so Jason, we've got the expansion project update, do you want to handle any notes on that or?
I mean, expand, yeah, we'll have to, it should just be facility update. So this was Wayne's report and future reports will come under the CFO report. So when, when last, we reorganized that too and promoted Trent to Director of Facilities. And he's directly reporting up to Jennifer, you know, so. If you have any questions on, on that report.
Do you know who prepared, prepared this one?
Wayne.
He did, okay, then I'll leave the corrections for another day.
The only, the only note, my, uh, you can speak whatever you will, just for instance. Of the architect for interior. For interior, so.
Oh, yes, so we did an R F Q for qualifications for the Radio Hill um renovation. Of second half and selected a team out of Yakima, design West. Um, he came up last week and did a walkthrough of the um facility with Trent and Randy and I. And we'll have a proposal bid um for that work here shortly.
Any other facilities related questioned by the board members, anyone else? All right, so we're moving on to operations, Dave Caddell's chief nursing officer.
My report starts on page twenty nine. Um, I just wanted to call out a few things and then let me know if you have questions. We've had three Wednesdays, our third O R up and running, two of the three went fantastic, the third one, we we learned some things, which was great. I mean, it's nice, uh we had a couple um add-ons and so. When you already have a really busy scheduled day and then you have add-on emergencies, it was really good for the team to practice that work in in real time. Um, so they did some learnings and I think one of the neat things, just calling out, when I first came in, we talked about restructuring. We added those managers in the O R and one of the things that's really been helpful for Amy is she's meeting with her team. And talking about that first time long time start, they meet every single day. At a certain time, like twenty minutes after, looking at why, why were we late? What was, you know, the barriers to getting the patients in the O R, and so the managers are all meeting and they're working together, because you can't have one piece without the other in the O R. Like, everything is works in tandem, and so that's just one of the examples of now she's taking that back to her. The managers are going back to their team and talking about how could we have been better and more efficient? And not Amy having to try to do that throughout all of the team, so S P D, O R and the S O P area comes together every day with Amy and they review the day before. And that morning, uh so it's been really cool for her, so thank you again for supporting that leadership structure. Um, in the E D, uh we're continuing to do the nurse residency program, which was also approved, um very thankful. But what we're finding out now is we have a new um grad nurse, new grad nurses coming up through other areas of the hospital. And so we're able to use some of the pieces of that E N A residency program we purchased to help the critical care residencies come in, so. We're starting to see that expansion of that program just a few months in, which is really cool. Um, I did want to call out food and nutrition because um sometimes we miss this under Jan, they's doing such good work in his area. But he just signed another contract for um the virtual dietitian services that he builds and started providing. So we reestablished with Ferry County and then now um Quincy Valley is our seventh contract now. So that's kind of cool, he's been expanding that, um supported it tremendously himself in the past and now he has expanded services with his dietitians. And then last thing I wanted to mention is Danny is our new P C S manager, again, that management role that was supported. On how we're going to support the P C S services, she dove into her case management and social services. And found that we had to completely restrict the team, there's some things that we were not realizing, um that. Our roles and responsibilities were needed better alignment, so she spent her almost two months in that role. Getting that team established and aligned, we thought she was gonna spend most of her time with the hospital supervisors, but she's actually. Been spending most of her time with case management and social services, which is extremely important to our bottom line, because how we get our patients in. And out discharged properly, this is why Jennifer's shaking her head, so she's creating a utilization review team with. Um, which is something that is a regulatory requirement, so we can make sure we're following our patients through and charging appropriately, et cetera. So there's a lot of work going on with this um one small team, but they're small but mighty. Um, and so I just wanted to call out the work that Danny's been doing already in her short tenure at her hospital. Other than that, do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. So, uh Chief Inspector, Rhonda, good evening.
Hi, everyone, my report is on page thirty two and I don't have any updates for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you want to just talk about the news we have regarding patients that need a M R I and implanted devices? Case makers and defibrillators. That will be able to keep those patients here at our facility. Um, because we have written a new protocol in place, and so we don't have to transfer them out. Which is pretty exciting news, we're gonna keep all that imaging business here, I don't know if you wanted to talk about that briefly or just mention it.
We have mentioned that previously, just that we do have the staff now that are trained in being able to um. Recognize those devices and be able to get those patients who used to be sent away to other facilities. Um, they can now have their M R I here, we had had that program on a bit of a hold, because we were trying to build some charges related to. Um, that device switch over, um and so now we are, we will be starting that program. So yes, that policy came out today was the first that I had seen it, a decision tree for it.
Yeah, and we tested it too, and it did a mini test, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
You missed a really good presentation, our first presentation is from our M R I staff, you know, um. Four months or so ago, yeah, but definitely worth checking on recording too.
The M R I team did a really excellent presentation, um gosh, when was that, was that back in? I don't know, May? I think it might have been in May. That they gave a presentation, um just on all the services that they're providing, it was Matt Izzy and his team, they they did a fantastic job.
On the M R I topic, just a note, we got to tour a couple of spine surgeons through our our area yesterday, they wanted to check out our facility. So we got to turn through surgery and then um went by. Um, unfortunately, well, fortunately, M R was was busy, which is awesome, but didn't get to meet the M R I staff, because they've actually been sending orders to us. Um, from from Seattle and and wanted to meet our M R I techs that they've really had awesome experiences working with, so.
That was the motivation to come over here and tour was the interaction you had with them?
Uh, that and they would be interested in potentially doing some services here.
Not not just M R I, but M R A's, which. Uh, it's can be tough to find those machines, so we're really fortunate to have that machine that we have.
Think we maybe needed two. It's getting busy, it's busy, keep it running, yeah.
It's good, uh any other questions for Rhonda? Thank you, Rhonda, appreciate it, unless you have anything else for us?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, uh next we have Chief Clinic Operations, Stacy Elliott.
My report starts on page thirty three and just a few quick comments, reach out and read program. That was started by Dr. Elise Herman before she retired. And what it is, is we purchase books and for every well child exam, the kids get a free book, so they're in Spanish and English. And they just expanded the program down to newborn, it used to be six months to five years old, so we're really excited to get. Kids books at their very first newborn visit, so that's an exciting program, we offer that at Family Medicine Ellensburg. Peeds and Family Medicine Clehalum, and then tomorrow we start our apprentice kickoff. We have one M A apprentice starting with us, um we're still kind of finalizing details where. But it sounds like it might be up in Clehalum or E N T is where their home clinic is gonna start at, so. Keeping us busy, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, it's good to have Dr. Hoppy back in the office.
It is wonderful to have Dr. Hoppy.
Any other questions?
The only thing I'll mention is, these are really good reports, if we don't have questions, just because your reports are so good, so we are. We are paying attention and re reviewing your reports, but uh but I really appreciate all the work you guys do on these, um.
Yeah.
It really is, they're really very informative, so thank you.
Agreed, thank you, yeah, any other questions or comments? All right, anything else for us, Stacy? All right, we are on to uh Chief of Staff, Dr. Hoppy.
Yeah, my report is on um page thirty six. Um, the credentialing committee met um met and we did uh review credentialing files. For five initial appointments, twelve reappointments, and then we also added some additional privileges to one of the. Um, physician assistants. That we realized once we were reviewing the privileges for the new onboarding provider, we. Realized that we had left out a couple privileges, and so that is something we identified and we lost. So, so you will see. Those delineation of privileges and the two things we added for the physician assistant is treadmill, uh testing, pharmacologic, cardiac testing. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do you have like a motion on these?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Uh, any further discussion, are we doing these individually or together, doing individually? Alright, so this is for the credentialing motion and uh second to any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. The two of vote aye, that motion passes. And for the delineation of privileges, have a chance to review, I entertain a motion when ready. Motion by Erica.
Second.
Second, uh any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. I two of vote aye, that motion passes. Anything else worth tonight, okay, thank you. Chief Medical Officer, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you very much, my report begins on page forty one, uh I would like to highlight, uh as has been previously mentioned, that we've had a very successful experience. With uh Janine's recruiting team, uh we have a a number new providers who have recently onboarded or will be onboarding shortly, in particular. We're excited about a lot of new growth, in the emergency department, we've had a number of successful applicants for the A P C positions in the emergency department interview. As well as E A Y, who will be onboarding six new physicians who will be entering in rotation, so we anticipate seeing some new faces. And uh that will also help to uh provide us some additional bench strength. Uh, when we're looking to backfill uh services like rapid access clinic, so. Uh, thank you to Dr. Smelzer and also to Janine's team uh for helping with that process. Happy to entertain any questions.
With uh something such as E A, uh why bring sixteen position, if we also lose some of the process of moving our rotation out, or just adding six to the. To the team?
To the team, exactly, so uh they are expanding and and being very successful in their enterprise and in so doing, they need to backfill. And enter and meet all of their track bill obligations and we will benefit from that, have a deeper venture.
Any other questions?
Well, on the um. Uh, Sierra Delay, she'll be doing, she'll some manipulative, manipulation therapy, but she'll also be doing. Other medicine treatment, or is he strictly doing that?
So Dr. Brian at Family Medicine Ellensburg will be doing exclusively. Niklative therapy, that's her fellow, or rather, her residency training, um but Sierra Delay uh is indeed. Um, uh planning on delivering full framework care services.
Yeah, sorry, I was reading up and set it down.
We are.
Yeah.
Ending our uh manipulative therapy uh service and and Dr. Brian will shortly, but yet TBD. Uh, as far as start date is concerned, be joining us for that.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Thomas? Anything else for us?
Anything else?
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on, Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, good evening, my report starts on, I don't know, because I'm looking at the. And I'm actually um have not a lot to add, except for on page forty nine, on my statement of income. Just wanna call out, as we get to know each other, I did start to focus on year to date rather than the month. And more um because. We kind of established a trend, and last month I had said, I thought we were gonna be about seven. Under budget, it turns out we were closer to two, so I just continued on with the year to date. Some of the reasons why we did do better was, I know we got to recognize the SNAP funds where C M S authorized that. Excuse me, for the quarter, so that that was helpful, and another reason why we were lower was we had two months of. Um, accrued depreciation, so it's a little bit overstated on the expense. Let's see, what else did I want to call out?
I'm glad SNAP came through, because I rolled the dice and paid them early.
Yeah, you did. I'm not so risk averse. Um, let's see, do 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 do, I guess that's really all I have, we're really working on kind of a deep dive for our special. Board meeting when we talk about strategies, so we'll have more indication on what's to come there and so forecasting. Things, so unless you have questions.
So just to clarify, we are a little uh below, a little bit of a loss on operating income, but when we put our investments back in, it brought us positive.
Correct, and and most of that loss was a an extra accrual of appreciation, so really from a prior month, so. Yeah.
Very good, and we truly did have just twelve baby deliveries in June. Um, but we have a lot more in July.
You can make it up for in July, so you are.
Look forward to it. We're trying to figure out what happened in September.
Any uh any questions for Jennifer?
I guess the only question I have is, uh we talked about before what your sort of ideal A R days would be.
Yep.
Um, you don't want, you don't want it too low, uh because that would mean you're writing off those steps. Don't want it too high, um. The budget is sixty, or do you think, uh what's the ideal, I think I've asked you this before, but just to refresh.
Um, between fifty and sixty, I would say, like, if it gets any lower than fifty, I start to worry that they're just writing things off.
So this is good, we want to keep it steady.
I think it's really good and the um discharge not final bill right now is sitting around five days, we're um. I'd like to see it more closer to four, but we're getting there, so. They're doing a lot of work there.
So this is a, so, yeah, we don't want to see it go down. Keeping it steady is good.
Well, let's insurers start paying on the first run. Then it could be, you know, fifteen, but they don't.
Alright, well, thank you, thank.
And you'll see A R dip down, like we had lower charges in June, so A R naturally is lower in June. Because I've been lower charged too, so like days for months where we have those crazy, super busy months, you'll see A R shoes up. So sometimes it's just that that drives.
Yeah. And one other thing, um we're gonna do a credit balance cleanup, so you'll see A R who up. Next month or the month after, but we have a lot of credit balances to clean up. Not necessarily would pay back, but clean up.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
No, no, go ahead, John.
I I was just gonna say, um, as people know, we've been trying to push Medicare Advantage. Down in the community, just because of the frustrations we're having paid, um if people are are not aware, a couple days ago in Congress. That in Washington D C, they introduced a bill to force people onto Medicare Advantage. And once, uh when you turn sixty five, and it's a three-year commitment before you can look to undo it, so they're trying to write it in a way that. Unless you really pay attention, understand you can go in and undo it, it's gonna happen automatically. So I don't know if that's connected to who donates money to who. But it's a very illogical thing, since they also noted that Medicare Advantage turned out to be a lot less efficient than pure Medicare. And yet they're trying to force it on people when they turn sixty five, so.
So we have kind of talked about plans for some community education and making sure our Sheba representative knows. Uh, what we have contracted, um I think we have a really good, strong plan for contracting with. Med advantage plans, we have one sitting out there that really wants. I don't think, I really would like to have one, right, because people are gonna be on it.
Yeah.
But you gotta have a good.
If you gotta have an advantage, at least you have.
A good.
One or two that you can manage. But I think that will have some anecdotal evidence for people that switched to Medicare.
Yep.
I I'm hearing good things, so there's been no negative surprises for doing that.
Yeah, the only thing is the people that can't really afford a supplemental.
Yeah.
Or as we are finding, people that can't afford a part D. Or as we are finding people that can't afford a Part D, so then they. Buy for charity care and then we end up with the high.
Yeah.
Pharmacy charges, so.
Are you saying it's complicated?
Fun, isn't it?
Bob, you had a comment?
Yeah, I'm generally, you, uh, you, you said you're gonna clean up our AR days. You're talking, uh. Those that are like over. What, three hundred and sixty days or some of those are several years old. Is that, is that what you mean by that? Yeah.
Yeah, we are working on that already and some of those are really just on hold or in appeal and so those. Older ones, what I was really talking about was credit balances. So we have a lot of credit balances, whether they're misapplied or we just. Don't pay commercial back, so we just put it right back on there. So it will, um, you'll see AR go up, actually.
So a credit balance can mean, so a negative, a negative balance, like we owe the insurance company back or the patient back, so. Insurance always processes and reprocesses and sometimes they process, so we send the patient bill and then the patient pays. A thousand dollars and then the insurance reprocesses and they're like, oh, actually the patient didn't need to pay. Now we have a negative thousand dollar balance, so we would pay that back.
We pay patients back right away. We pay government payers right away, but it's the commercial payers that kinda. Sit there for resources that we didn't have to kind of tackle them. And we really don't pay, we don't pay. They, they pay and they paid for the service, so. We don't have to.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else for us?
No.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to, uh, Chief Public Relations, Michelle, I saw her on earlier, she on?
She had to pop up for another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, Michelle's attending one of the. Education events on Sunday. Um, eh, do you wanna say to her report? I mean, we haven't, we've read it, I don't. Um, no, just, yeah, they're just getting, helping getting us out in the community, so lots of different events scheduled. Through the weekends and every day, I think it feels like we have an event going on that. Somebody else pending, so, and this is the one that Michelle was able to jump in and, and go through for us. Um. As we start going into open enrollment, we'll be re-energizing conversations with Medicare Advantage. Still, we do take the. I think you did, or Tom, somebody did. So we'll still be trying to help manage our payers.
And Medicaid's gonna be really important, that, I think I might say.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, how would we, like, if we wanna do some, like, Facebook advertising? Um. How, cause the, cause can the hospital do that or that has to come from another?
Uh, yeah, the hospital can, so we're.
Okay.
We're pivoting to get a lot more out into the community through all the different avenues, farmers markets, social media. Um, TV, the, yep. And, and really trying to use our. Um, kind of a facelift to our branding as well and using our staff, our staff's pictures, our providers' pictures. You know, years ago you'd see our ad and it would be some doc that nobody knows. Now it'll be. Dr. Thomas or Doc Pobby or, you know, it'll be our providers' faces. Trying to have that more community feel to the work that we do, having smarter staff, our patients, doing more patient stories. Trying to get all that out through all the avenues, so social media.
Yeah.
Or website, yeah.
Cause, cause you can target certain age groups and certain.
Yeah.
Profiles and, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions related to the, uh. In the relations reports? Alright, hearing none, we're going on to, uh. Education and board reports, and so this is where I was gonna ask, uh. Senior leaders that were at this conference. If you have any takeaways and you'd just like to share that, uh, you know, was it valuable, what'd you learn, would, you know, anything you wanna share?
I thought it was fantastic. From, uh, workforce readiness perspective or an HR perspective, it was. How AI is being utilized across the board, um, to reduce burnout, to scale efficiencies, to. Um, create, uh, quality improvement, um, strategic alignment. Um, it, it just permeated every discussion that was at that conference. The flip side to that, there's a lot of excitement, um, it was just swirling all around, right? And, and there was a lot of talk about it being. You're not gonna be able to avoid it. It's going to be ubiquitous to the way that you do your work. Um, moving forward, and so there was a, of, of another side to that discussion that talked about the, the dangers associated with that. The, the loss of that human action, um, you wanna make sure that you're still keeping the human. Being at the center of your work, let the, let the minutia of the work be handled by, um, AI. But keep that human connection. Um, also your governance is, uh, cy- cybersecurity, um, your, um. Governance structure for that, which. It was way over my head, but I certainly understood the need of it, so, um, but yeah, that was the, the big takeaway for. For the HR side, but it was, it was very, very interesting to see some of the, the work projects that people were working on.
So there's some demonstrations of things they were talking about and stuff, yeah. Good. Yeah, any thoughts?
Well, Janine stole my other human connection side of AI. Um, just to add to that piece, cause there's several things and, um, we can talk further about it when we look at strategic planning and things. Such as our engagement surveys and those things, but I think. What was cool, expanding on what Janine said, when you look at AI and technology and all those things, and I've been in nursing long enough now and healthcare. That, you know, we went from that, we did a lot of things with our eyes and ears and hands without tools. And we did good things at that time, and so there's a famous picture from eighteen ninety. And Dr. Thomas probably is very familiar, maybe even Bob, in medical school, but you look at. There, there's a doctor looking at this patient who's a child who's laying in the bed and he talked through that human connection and why it's so important, the physicians. Looking at the patient and using his eyes as ears and just that intuition and your, your. Deep rooted knowledge of something's not right, that AI cannot do. And it, so he shows this picture and at the very end he puts the computer over the patient. And it was so powerful. I don't know about the rest of everybody there, but it just instantly had me reflecting back through. My time in healthcare and that's what's happening. And so how could we be really diligent with. Where we put AI tools, where we use technology and continue to provide that support, because we are gonna have a shortage. Et cetera, we're in a shortage today. They talked a lot about rider wellness is top, top conversation. And how do we keep people still in the field by providing those resources to, to take tasks and. Things that they don't need to do, that we use AI for to help. Get you back to the patient. How do we get our caregivers back to having that time with the patient? And it's so funny because that was the very last. Talk of the entire conference and for me the most powerful, we heard all about AI, AI, AI all the way through and then boom. Don't forget about the patient, so.
What was it? Stop innovating and start renovating.
Yes, exactly.
Well, as you might imagine, I went to sessions such as payer relations. Building high performing organizations for financial sustainability and optimizing payer negotiations. Which was my favorite one, so they had, um. Um, a man that is now a consultant, but he worked for thirty-five years on the contracting side at Blue Cross. And so he had just lots and lots of information about. Uh, optimizing your negotiations with your payers and how to get a really good plan together and, and so, um. I'm excited about that. And the other one was again AI, but, um, the other side of. You know, we have all this stuff for dictation for providers and they said it's not gonna be too long until it's two-way. Where it's prompting you to say, this is United Healthcare, uh, you know, and they really wanna see this. And I was like, I never thought about that before, but, um, so anyway. Yeah, I, I thought it was really. A good conference.
Good.
And good music too.
I guess, uh, I'll follow up on that, uh, stuff too, cause, um, yeah, there was a lot of stuff on AI. The whole point, uh, of AI was to take. Well, one of the things it can do is take the burden off providers and charting and, uh, and documentation, right? Um, I mean, the, the, you two are very familiar probably, uh, with the fact that, uh. A lot of your time spent, uh, with the HR, right? And so a lot of the things that these AI programs can do. Is they can, uh, reduce that so that you can have more, more personal interaction with patients, so you're not doing with it. It's sort of filling it in. Um, it's, uh, some of these things can kind of review all the, the patient notes and charts. Whereas, as I s- you know, I saw some data on this, you're really only looking at about three percent of what's in there. It can, it can sort of prompt you on certain things and, and, uh, and bring up summaries and, and then, but it, it's a co-pilot as they describe it. So it's not ever making decisions or putting stuff in there without the, the provider sort of approving it and reviewing the stuff. So the purpose of some of that stuff is to help, um. Help free the provider up to have more personal interaction with the patient. That's the idea. So you're not always just typing stuff in. I know we have some. You know, we had some, um, um, scribes and stuff to help with that, but this is supposed to sort of take that to the next level. Um, at some point I'll talk to. Uh, Jason and Jeff about, about all this stuff because, uh, after the, the wish, uh. Uh, oh, great. Um, wish, uh, I wish we got a, uh, we got something like a sample AI policy that. That you might opt at that meeting in June. And then, uh, here we got some information about how the sort of AI. Committee or administrative structure might look like and, and how to do it. One thing that everyone stressed was you don't just start with a technology and sort of put it on people. You start with the people who are in the clinics. And say, what do you need? What can help, uh, help you with, with what you do? And then you kind of go and move forward with, with something that can help that. So. That's something everyone's stressed, but, um, but anyway, that, so there's a lot of that. I think that's really interesting. The, and the other, only other thing I'll mention is. Um, one of the speakers talked about, uh, pharmacy leakage. I don't know why I talked about it like that, it sounds kinda gross, but, uh, but the idea is there might be ways that you can keep people, uh, to get. Their prescriptions at our pharmacy, um, and, uh, that would, that would help with revenue and, and also help with convenience. It's and help the, uh, with, uh. Uh, what's, what's the word? Adherence to their, to their care plan. So I have some thoughts about that too, but, um. But yeah, so I'll talk to some specific people about, about specific things on that, but that, that's sort of the general idea. Terry, what, uh, what's one, uh, one or two takeaways you had?
Well, the one thing I was gonna talk about was, um, the United States. It's seventy-nine thousand low on nurses. Uh, and, uh, it was interesting today when I was doing some grocery shopping. I had five people come in and talk to me when I was walking around and I talked to them about the, the low in nurses. And they said that they would have their children or their grandchildren to try to go to nursing school. And then I said, if they did and they graduated, they could contact, uh, the hospital here. And we become a nurse here. And we, earlier t- today in the meeting, we showed that there were some nurses going. That we still needed here. And I thought it was interesting that they, uh, were gonna get their, uh, children or grandchildren. To try to become a nurse, so we might be able to increase it, but seventy-nine thousand low nurses. And then a lot of that had to do with the fact of, uh. The COVID pandemic reduced a lot of things that people didn't wanna be in healthcare anymore. So, but, uh, I still think that, uh, some of the people around here are gonna have their. Uh, their kiddos, uh, become nurses or something like that.
On sort of a personal note, I'll say that it was really nice to, uh, spend a little time outside of the hospital with some of our newish. Uh, that's something, I'll say, say newish because you got to be here for a little bit. Uh, but, uh, um, but it was really good. I think, uh, I was glad to spend the time at the conference, spend the time with, uh, with you guys and to learn a lot, so. I, I appreciate the board supporting, uh, Terry and, and me going to that, uh, to that conference and, and thanks to. Um, to Jason for supporting, uh, these sort of educational opportunities, both for, uh, members of the S L T and for members of the board. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good, thanks. No, okay. So, uh, again, Matt, thanks for sending those notes today. It made me feel like I was at the conference, but I didn't get to socialize. But my couple of ta- takeaways from the notes that Matt kind of touched on already was. Um, that again, it needs to be driven by who needs the work. You don't force them, say, you're gonna use this. It, it's important to go identify the needs and reverse engineer from there. And, uh, I also am, am wondering if we need to get serious about starting, um, like an AI. Commit with a couple of people who can gain some expertise and then reach out to these different groups. So that not everyone's reinventing their own wheel. Each department's trying to, you know, from scratch that a, a team of people can get a little, you know. Because again, it's, I, I think it's, it's main point is not to replace people, take away the friction points people have that create job burnout. Which again, Matt already talked about, uh, from the doctor's perspective, right? There's a lot of places in the organization that these sort of, um. Uh, uh, inventions or, you know, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, can. Take things off the shoulders so you can get, get to the work that's more important, again, like work at the top of your license, so to speak, rather than being a tight list or whatnot. And, uh, I'm, I'm playing with it more and more each day just to understand it, cause I figure I gotta make sure. Uh, my kids understand it because I'm not so sure their chosen colleagues are useful right now, so. Uh, the world is changing so quickly and I think it's important that we do our best to inform ourselves. And then work with the different departments to see what that can do to help us stay in front of this wave that is, is coming and, uh. And I, I appreciate there are huge limits to it. There's some scary stuff to it. There's some unknowns. Like they say, they often don't even know. How these models do what they do now. They're, they're outpacing the scientists that created them. Um, but that's, that's for a lot of things in history. We've just never really thought about before. So anyhow, at some point, if the board, if senior leadership wants to get serious about talking about some sort of. Committee, I think it'd be good, obviously work through Jeff's office on it and stuff and just. Again, not, I, I don't wanna lag behind people. I don't want everyone else to solve. I think, I think we have the talent here to stay in front of it. And, and so, Jeff, do you have any thoughts on this topic?
Oh, yeah, I got a lot of thoughts on the topic. Yeah, now, I mean, you know, right now, the, the, the issue is it's unregulated, right? So there's no regulations around it. Um, all, all open. I am looking at models that, you know, we can have. A, a little bit more privacy too, um, but right now it's, it's open AI, so. So everybody's information is going into the same place and that's how it, um, you know, figures out and gives you recommendations. Um, yeah, you know, we're definitely for it. We have areas that we're already, we're probably one of the leaders in. Um, and so for our community hospital to, you know, use, we call it, uh, in Oracle, it's called CAA, so clinical. AI assistant. And we use it today. I think there's what, thirty-eight providers that are using it in the clinics and so they're carrying around a, uh, mobile phone. Um, that is recording the conversation between the patient and the physician and it's filling in the chart. Um, it knows what's, what to put in, what to leave out, and that is progressing, um, with Oracle. Um, tremendously over the, the last, you know, year, um, and will continue to. Um, other hospitals have now. Um, started implementing that as well. There are other areas where more, a little more con- you know, conservative right now until we know more. Um, we are allowing some of it in leadership for reports and other things that are non-patient based. Um, so that is great. And so we are monitoring it, you know, finding ways that, um, we can protect our data. Um, there are already some, um, issues out there with. Um, biases of the AI and so things that, you know, we're watching in the background. Um, there are companies starting to get sued over some of it, so that's happening as well. Um, so just things that we need to watch, areas where, you know, we can be front of line. I have no problem with that, um, but other areas where we need to take a little bit more of a backseat, uh, and see where it develops, right? So, so yeah, uh, happy to discuss it with anybody and, you know, um, progress and so. Um, but we'll, we'll always be on the, on the front of the majority of this, so.
Very, oh, thank you, Jeff, for your thoughts. Very, very helpful, so. Um, I know we'll be revisiting this a lot in the months to come and, uh, something will emerge from it as it coalesces and whatnot. Um, any other questions about the board reports or the conference comments from anybody?
Well, I, I had one more comment.
Well, I, I had one more comment, since I'm on the governance committee. The Washington State Hospital Association, you were talking about an AI committee, and they had that governance up in. In Shalan, they talked about the AI policy, and they also, a couple other people in the meeting also mentioned. About an AI committee, so now WISHA may be having a lot of education about increasing an AI committee. Because that's what they were talking about up there.
Excellent. Did, did you have some?
Just this one. How fast it's advancing in the ways that it's permeating. Healthcare, everything, it just makes me think of the transition from steam-powered candle to electricity, and it's at least that transformative, it's exciting. A little terrifying, let's not get electrocuted, but. But the potential, you know, I'm an optimist, I like to think about the potential it has to help and to make things better, so I. Excited about it, so thank you for your thoughts on what you brought back.
I think one thing to keep in perspective on these AI models is they're growing exponentially. And the curve is quite shocking that in the next eighteen months to twenty four months. The world can look really, really different unless something impedes this growth and whatnot, so.
We should all be sure to thank the computer before we.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with Jeff, I think there is, there is bias, so. You know, how do you determine the bias level, that's the, that's, that's a hard part.
Agreed, this is not a simple topic, this is going to take a lot of effort, but it starts by us deciding we want to be a part. Of that process, so that we can understand how and if it should be utilized, and, and where we find places to use it. Help the departments, you know, ha- have a way to do as efficiently as possible, so again, the goal is to just. Help everyone have the tools to do their job in today's world as efficiently as possible, so.
One of the other things I would just add is, it was very clear that, and it may be in Matt's notes. If you're not already doing it or thinking about it, you're already behind.
Yeah.
And so I think when you talk eighteen or twenty four months, as much as we want things to look like they used to, or we have the time, we just. Don't have time, so as much, they also were very clear about small incremental changes, try it with one thing, like we are in the clinics, we're doing that, then move. Methodically, but not as slow as we're used to moving, because it will be way behind.
And that's why I thought some sort of committee, in other words, a central gathering point of this knowledge for this organization. Each department isn't reinventing the wheel, and. Let's use that knowledge we're getting to, to steer people and to make good decisions and, and. But, you know, Bob, is an excellent point, the bias is going to be tricky if it's relevant, what we're trying to use it for, so there's a lot that's going to have to go into it. I just want to make sure we're thinking about it, we're not waiting to be steamrolled by the world.
Yeah, we, we absolutely are, we adopted a policy on AI, what, probably six months ago, and we have a. IT EMR steering committee that we're, need to be focusing further and further towards. Evolving as the IT evolves, and, and that committee is also, we do have a committee currently, and then Jeff's got a pretty good process to really scrutinize. These things that come up, so there are hundreds of different AI programs out there, so we do have a process that we're working on. Really vetting those things.
Yeah, there's going to be more and more geared towards healthcare, people try and do the work for you, but then what's, what's under the hood, you know, now.
And we're chatting regularly, you know, our admin team talking about who's using AI, but it's like, are you, just don't put your hand up, and now we all are, so, you know.
If you don't want to, if you don't want to slog through the whole thirty plus pages of notes, there are a couple of. There are. Summarizing. There are a couple of slides that I put in there that I thought were particularly important, one having to do with governance structure of the AI sort of committee. And one, which I thought was really fascinating, listing all the sort of different, I mean, all, maybe all, of the. Different AI programs that you can have in all the different sort of areas. And so if you want to sort of see what that looks like, you can scroll through to those, those slides, I think, anyway, just a suggestion.
All right, things that I thought was fascinating, and just to call back out, was, there was a, I met. An organizational psychologist who said, one of the things that are emerging as a result of AIs are becoming more efficient and faster, and we're able to do more, we're able to scale it up and do more with less. And they said, well. Are organizations really using that to give providers more time with the patient, or is it to just get more patients through the door? Are we using AI to, to give relief to our frontline managers, so that they're, you know, or are we just normalizing more dysfunction, they can, they can have more now, so we give them more work? And, and the volume just simply increases, so we haven't really addressed the root issue, we've just kind of made it bigger. So that, that was an interesting discussion, too, to make sure that you're true north in, in how you're using AI. Really do keep your eye on, on the human being that's affected by it.
Yeah, I'm glad, you know, from Deb's comments, that they did talk about the other human side of it as well, right, so we can't lose focus. We can't lose focus on that, you know, my concern is when we get to AI, talking to AI, right? And so, and it's taking out, it's taking out the human connection now, so. So even though I'm in IT, the human connection pieces is still vital for me, so.
The optimist says that the EHR took the human connection.
Yeah.
AI will help to correct the.
I mean, that's the whole.
There was one provider group, not to belabor, not to belabor it, but there was a hospital that actually gave back up to two hours, I think it was in a provider's day. To spend time with the patient, so as long as you keep your true north, that was the messaging. A lot on provider wellness, you'll be very. You guys will be very. Interested potentially to see some of that stuff if Matt has it, just the data and the. Surveying and some of that, you already know to be true, but then what are some of the things that AI is doing to help the provider get back to the patient? Yeah, I know, it was very, very cool, nursing and other areas, too, but writer wellness is.
All right, any other things to discuss from the conference or AI?
It's all night.
Here we go. All right, so we're going to move on to, to new business, but before we decide how much to do there, so the reason I put this on was. Jason had given me some notes, I think he gave you guys some, so I did some notes on it, I wasn't sure, is the commissioners, if we wanted to consolidate it, or maybe. You guys have not actually had a time to review it yet, so you're not ready to talk about it, so does anybody have an opinion? On if we want to do anything on this tonight, so we speak with one voice from the board, or do we want to just send stuff individually to Jason and his team and let them sort through? And so if we're going to spend time, I want to release people that don't need to be here, but if we're not going to spend time, then we'll just go to our normal break before executive session, so that's all I'm trying to sort out right at this moment.
Well, I, I mean. Members of the senior leadership team have worked on this, I mean, Terry and I gave some feedback at our gender review. I, I guess I'd support sort of individuals reaching, reaching out and letting Jason sort of incorporate it as necessary.
See if I can sneak that heist in or.
I'll take all of that, I'm happy to take all of that and then get it condensed, so that, trying to do, you know, all that, because a lot of you. Same stuff, and then they're getting almost final version about August sixth, kind of a meeting.
That's why I was trying to not overwhelm you with all different opinions, that's why I try to, if we have similar opinions and. Like, I'm mostly just about removing a whole bunch of words that I don't think are necessary, but no one else may agree with me, and that, that's fine, but I just like to present it. But if the board feels comfortable just individually send things and let you and your team be the deciders, then we'll. Go from there, so Bob, do you have an opinion on this, I don't know, you've been traveling, so I don't know if you even got this document on the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the document.
Okay. So I don't think Bob's ready to discuss it. So do you have thoughts on how to do tonight, move forward without doing a big discussion, or?
I can easily get lost in the weeds, but I, I haven't found a lot of weeds to get lost in so far. I'm more of a ruminator and think about it, and I. There are a couple of things that I. That I think are. Maybe valid discussions when we get together, but it's not, not so much.
My, my only concern is, based how it's been described to me. By August sixth, you want this already kind of written in stone, we're just signing off on, I'm not hearing room for much discussion.
My hope is to get, yeah, get as much done, so that then we can go over it as a group, spend my, my agenda. For August sixth was to spend an hour on this, and then spend an hour and a half on finance, an hour and a half on space planning, so. Yeah, my, my hope was to spend an hour on this, August sixth, and then hopefully be, be right there and, and done with it, yeah.
Terry, do you have any thoughts on this particular document, so?
Okay, not to mention it.
So I'm not hearing anybody has a need to discuss it now as commissioners, so we'll just send stuff individually to you and your team. And you'll sort it out, is that, everybody's in agreement with that? I think Bob's happy with that, since you didn't have the document.
Yeah, well, no, now I remember, we did talk about it, me and Jason did, so, yeah, now I know what you're talking about.
And it should be in your email, too. It's in your email.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so that being said, that will conclude the new business for today. That moves us to executive session, it is seven oh one, so why don't we take a four-minute break, and then we'll come back into executive session. How long do we need for executive session?
I think thirty minutes, and I just need Jennifer to hang out.
Thirty minutes and Jennifer, okay, and will there be any motions or decisions made after executives?
Possibility of motion.
Have to do anything for that, or just make you aware, it might be. We just see it right down, so with that said, we'll adjourn to seven oh five, we'll start executive session, thank you, everyone. Show you all the reports.
Good night. Yeah, I got, I got that, Mandy. Yeah, I think I have that one.